We're going to go ahead and get started. Remind everybody in the audience, if you wanted to sign to, to speak, there's a sign in out front. So Alex, or Alan, will you, uh?
Yeah, let me get a phone call. You're here. Bert?
Here.
Uh, Laura?
Here.
She's gone. Jackie?
Here.
Uh, Hayden?
Here.
And Mitzi?
Here.
Please stand for prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in gratitude for this community. We are privileged to serve, grant us wisdom, compassion, and unity as we make decisions that impact our neighbors and future generations. May we lead with integrity and work together in a spirit of fairness and understanding. Bless this meeting, our discussions, and our efforts, that they may be, bring prosperity and peace to all. Amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Y'all received your packet?
Yep.
We need a motion to approve the minutes? Or any corrections or additions or?
I'm going to approve the, the minutes from last month.
Got a motion made to approve the minutes for last month? Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded? All those in favor? Any unfinished business from previous meetings? Business items for this meeting? Um, we have resolution one twenty-six. If you want to go ahead and read that, Alan.
Yep. Resolution designating and authorizing the mayor and manager of the water system to execute certain documents in connection with funding administered by the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. Whereas the city of Leslie owns, uh, Leslie, Arkansas owns and operates a water distribution system. Thus, system in order to provide water service to meet the needs of the city and its inhabitants. And whereas the city council is determined that it is best interest of the city and its inhabitants to apply for assistance from the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, the ANRC, in order to make certain improvements to the system. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Leslie, Arkansas. Section one, that the mayor of the city, as a signature agent or the successor of said agent, is hereby authorized and directed to make application for assistance administered by the ANRC and to execute when approved by the city council, a bond purchase agreement and instruments issued and/or made pursuant thereof on behalf of the city from time to time. Section two, that the mayor of the system, as a signature or agent or the successor of said agent, is hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of the city, all of the documents and certificates required.
A little background on this resolution. It was sent to me just after, like the day after our, our meeting last month. This is from ANRC and this is just playing cleanup on our grant that we have. It's the grant that's on the ground now. This is a, a new document for them. Um, it's a signatory allowing us, allowing me to sign, which we've already signed. So this is playing cleanup on aisle three. So, for them. Anyways, this is, I'm not applying for new grants with this. I'm not doing anything with this. They tell me to sign a document, I'll sign. This is for our water line grant right now. So. Any questions? Comments? And I, I asked him if I needed to hold a special meeting to accomplish this. He had said no. So I would have called a special meeting, should we have had to have this before tonight? And he said, no, we don't need it right now. Hold off to your next scheduled meeting. So, um, we'll have it. So.
How come it's not, like, there's no specification for this? Or like, cause couldn't it be like, you know, it's good for future use too?
Well, it's for the ANRC, for this.
It'd probably be anybody with the ANRC, any grants with them.
ANRC, yeah.
The one, one grant wasn't with them, so.
Yeah. That's what it looks to me. It's for this one and anything in the future from ANRC.
For section two, doesn't it say the manager of the system? Is hereby authorized to execute all of the documents and certificates required?
Or the, yes, or the successor.
Right now, are they not able to?
So, no.
If any of the certificates required?
This is a document that they need on file in our portfolio, but. This is their, this is their wording. I changed, um, it had blanks where it says city of Leslie. I put our specifics. City of Leslie, city council, mayor. That's about it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was just basics.
In our resolution.
It's kind of like a form letter and he just had to fill in the specifics, I guess, on our city.
Probably came from an audit or something. Somebody said, hey, wait, we don't have a, don't have this document.
Can you make a motion to pass resolution number one twenty-six?
Got a motion made to pass resolution one twenty-six. Got a second. All those in favor? Sign yours. Next agenda item, um, policy committee. So a policy committee met, I presume, and I didn't get a chance to sit with y'all before I got back. But I received this via email a few days ago. So we can go over the policy? And I don't believe the mayor has changed much.
No, the only thing we changed was that you, uh, must be living within the city limits.
Okay.
That was the only pickup.
Did y'all have a chance to look over these again? Okay. You do know these are living, breathing documents and we can change them, um, as needed. You know, there, if there's something that the mayor's not doing or the city, y'all aren't doing, we can add it. Or we said, no, it's too much, let's pull it, whatever. But it's a living, breathing document. So, um, I'll go over the mayor position. Um, job title, mayor. Location, Leslie, Arkansas. Elected, part-time, full-time, as needed. Term length, four years, or as defined by local ordinance. Overview, the mayor of Leslie Arkansas serves as a chief executive officer of the town. Responsible for providing leadership, setting strategic direction, ensuring effective delivery of municipal services. This role involves close collaboration within the city council, town departments, local businesses and residents to support community growth, safety, and quality of life. Key responsibilities. Leadership and governance, preside over city council meetings and public hearings. Propose and implement town policies, ordinances, and resolutions. Serve as a primary liaison between, um, the town and county, state, and federal agencies. Community engagement, act as a representative and advocate for Leslie and community events and public forums. Maintain open communication with residents. Responding to concerns and ideas, foster partnerships with local organizations, churches, schools, and businesses. Economic development, promote small business growth, tourism, including natural assets like the Buffalo River, and job creation. Support infrastructure improvements and grant acquisition to enhance town facilities and services. Municipal management, oversee town operations, budgets, and personnel in coordination with the county, uh, council and clerk treasurer. Ensure compliance with state and federal laws and local ordinances. Adjust, address public safety, emergency management, and long-term planning initiatives. Qualifications, must be a resident of Leslie, Arkansas, living within the city limits. Demonstrated leadership experience, ideally in public service, business, or community involvement. Strong communication, decision-making, and conflict resolution skills. Knowledge of or willingness to learn about municipal government's budgeting and our state law. Desirable traits. Passion for rural community life and local traditions. Visionary thinking with practical follow-through. Ability to work collaboratively with diverse groups. Familiarity with grant writing, tourism promotion, or public works is a plus. I'd like to put this one to bed. I mean, if that's, so we're not going to revisit this every month. So I'd like to, um, I don't know if we need a motion to approve the job title, or even if it's just a?
Do we need one for each one, or do we just need one for the three at the end?
That's fine too. Okay?
Again, we've done the same number of meetings in the same number of months on all three, right?
Yep.
I guess.
Go ahead.
Okay. Job title, city council?
Hang on one second. Did we have any comments about that one?
Job title, city council member. Location, Leslie, Arkansas. Type, part-time, elected position. Compensation, stripping. Position summary. The city of Leslie is seeking dedicated, community-minded individuals to serve as a member of the city council. As an elected official, you will play a key role in shaping the future of our town by representing the interests of local citizens, helping manage municipal services, and ensuring the responsibility use of our city resources. Key responsibilities. Attend and participate in regular city council meetings, special sessions, and committee meetings. Review and enact local ordinances, budgets, policies, and development plans. Represent the concerns and interests of residents in your ward or district. Collaborate with fellow council members and city staff to address community issues. Engage with public through community events, forums, and outreach activities. Help establish goals and priorities for city growth, infrastructure, and public service. Ensure transparency and accountability of the city government operations. Qualifications, resident of Leslie, Arkansas, within your ward, and eligible to vote in municipal elections. Strong commitment to public service and the betterment of the community. Williness to listen, collaborate, and make informed decisions. Basic understanding of local government operations training may be provided. Excellent communication, problem-solving skills, and interpersonal skills. Term and expectations. Terms and election cycles follow local ordinances, typically two years. Participation in regular meetings, typically once a month. May require evening or occasional weekend availability. Must comply with all ethics and conflict interest policies.
Any comments on that one? Questions, comments? Okay. Job title, water and sewer operator, town of Leslie, Arkansas. This is just clerical for me. We don't need town of, do we? The other ones have just Leslie, Arkansas.
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. Just town of, sorry. Leslie Arkansas, job type, full-time. Salary based on experience and qualifications. Job summary, the town of Leslie is seeking a dependable and skilled water and sewer operator to oversee the daily operations, maintenance, and repair of town's water distribution and sewer systems. This position ensures safe and efficient water and wastewater services while complying with all applicable regulations and reporting to town officials. Key responsibilities. Water system maintenance. Monitor and repair and maintain water distribution lines, pumps, valves, meters, hydrants, and other system components. Perform water sampling and testing to ensure compliance with health and safety standards. Perform water main installations, leak detect, leak detection, and emergency repairs. Sewer system maintenance, inspect, maintain, or repair sewer lines, lift stations, and wastewater facilities. Clear blockages and conduct preventive maintenance. Ensure compliance with environmental and wastewater treatment regulations. Perform connections on wastewater for new customers. Operational duties. Read and record water meters, investigate leaks, and address customer concerns. Maintain accurate records of work performed and maintenance schedules. Assist in locating underground utilities and respond to emergency calls after hours. Maintain his or her, hers, his or hers work site in a clean and organized, in a clean and organized, as well as safe manner, including mowing, weed eating, work areas as defined by council. Reporting and oversight. Report to the city of Leslie mayor to schedule work priorities, inform the mayor of any break-ins, and coordinate any work requiring temporary water shut-offs. Provide quarterly, once per quarter reports to the Leslie city council during council meetings outlined, outlining current activities and progress. Semi-annual job performance evaluations will be conducted by the mayor of Leslie. Equipment and facility use. Use of the city truck is permitted for work-related activities only. Only authorized city of Leslie employees or qualified persons may operate a ride on city-owned equipment. All city sewer and water facilities must be locked after business hours. City-owned buildings are designated for storage of city equipment only. Safety and equipment. Operate and maintain equipment such as back hose pumps and testing instruments safely and efficiently. Follow safety procedures and comply with OSHA standards and city safety protocols. Qualifications and requirements. High school diploma or equivalent. Experience in water and sewer operations preferred. Ability to obtain and maintain state certifications in water and wastewater operations. Knowledge of plumbing, pipe fitting, and mechanical repair techniques. Ability to operate heavy machinery and power tools. Valid Arkansas driver's license, CDL preferred, or ability to obtain. Ability to work outdoors in all weather conditions and respond to after-hours emergencies. Benefits. Competitive salary based on experience. Health and retirement benefits, if applicable. Paid holidays and vacation time. Training and certification opportunities. Questions? I do have a question. When we, when we discussed, um, vacation time, we never outlined vacation time.
Yeah, um, that we had, I don't know. I must have, this, we, we made a couple of rounds on this.
Okay.
The last one did not have that in it, had taken it out.
Okay.
So I'm not sure. I, I can take it out again. I don't know why it's in there this time. Cause we had, we had stripped it out at our last meeting. So I must have sent the, the one right prior to that, if that makes sense. Cause we did take it out, right? Any others?
Um, I. Open it up for the floor, I mean.
They already have health insurance and?
So we don't, we don't purchase the health. Okay? No. So what happens is that we give a stipend for the health insurance, and I believe it's two hundred and some, it was the least.
Two fifty-five.
Two fifty-five a month, and it was the least, I mean, it was better than anywhere else. It's better than going with, um, um, Arkansas Municipal League. Try to get their insurance on, we'd have to co-sign with Marshall.
Now, I will add to that, I was told last time I talked to somebody down there that they are in the process of making a where it can be for smaller towns like us. There's enough of us small towns and necessary, you want to have the five, five? That they're looking at the company to be able to provide insurance.
So we can do that now. We can join with Marshall.
Yeah. They're talking about where we can do it independently, is what they're looking at.
It just doesn't have any detail, it just says health. So we could do whatever we want with that, right?
Well, the minutes of the, of the, um, previous councils will, will show that we've authorized up to two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Yeah.
Um, and I believe there's, I don't remember the, the verbiage. But it's covered.
Yeah.
So.
That's why we put it in, we, we didn't want to leave it out, cause it's something we're doing today, so.
Yeah, and it, it could change. I mean, it could maybe go up a little bit, you know, from year to year, so we don't want to stick to one particular thing, I guess, but.
Any other comments? Okay. We'll need to move forward, cause I'm not.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the policy, the, uh, job descriptions for mayor, council person, and, uh, water and sewer operator as we just outlined.
Motion made? Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Oh, discussion?
Yes.
So I would like, because we have, uh, we have reviewed the mayor, and the mayor has had a chance to comment, and we have reviewed the council members, and we have, all the council members have had a con, had commented period. I would like Alex as the, um, operator, the water and sewer operator, to be able to review this and comment as well.
Sound like you got what you want?
Is that amicable to you?
What can you say?
Don't worry, it's amicable with me.
Okay, okay.
Put you on, put you together.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded?
Now this, don't include the vacation or nothing, does it?
No, I said, we, we'll take that out. That's going to be taken out.
Okay. Were you going to take the health retirement out too?
No, because that's something we do. And we need to document that we're doing that. It's not specific, it's very generic. Health and retirement.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Yeah. No doubt.
Any other comments?
Second?
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Mr. Court, you're on the agenda.
I'd like to talk about the ordinance. To vary for the leash law in city of Leslie. I had spoken for Robert, is it Robert? Richard?
Richard.
He had put his recommendation on his paper he gave me, I guess he put it on yours. About putting signs up in the city park, uh, and, and in the park, about having a leash on. Just for an example, my wife was walking the dog one day, we're in the park. Um, and brings her boxer, turns it loose, what runs over, starts trying to attack the dog she's walking. She's trying to keep it from biting her dog. You know, now it's trying to bite her and bite her, and she's in the middle of it. It's uncalled for. I will, I, I, I called the sheriff. He said, I can shoot it if I want to. I told him, I said, I'm not asking for permission, I'm going to. He said, you have a right to, and I said, I will. Um, I don't want to do that to somebody's dog.
Right.
You know, but we have an ordinance that needs to be enforced.
Okay.
And it also says, people that come into town bring these big, huge pit bulls that are running the park also. And ordinance says they're not allowed to leave their vehicle, they have to be maintained. They can only come out of their car when they leave the city limits. It's in the ordinance. Everybody read it, you know it's there. Uh, these laws need to be enforced. This ordinance needs to be enforced. You know, um, if my wife is bit, do I come to see and say, hey, you owe me a hospital bill? Cause you're not enforcing the ordinance. I don't know what to do, you know what I mean? Uh, I don't want to see that happen. But, you know, I mean, if, if, should we get attacked and, and get hurt real bad? I'm not going to be happy and I'm going to take other, you know?
Right.
Alternatives.
Right.
Um, so, um, you know, I just.
It's just about making it comfortable for everybody.
Yeah.
I, I stop using the park with the dogs for that purpose.
There's a lady came in, I guess, she said that she, she walks her dog, has a walk with a stick that owns a store in town here. You know, she has to walk in town, there's a lady that, next to the, was that Tewa House or whatever it is? The, 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 the big house over here in the corner.
Hatchet.
Hatchet. When they rent that house, she likes to walk. She tells us, she don't even walk anymore, because she can't walk any street without a dog running out of the yard. In the ordinance, it says that if a dog runs out of the yard and attacks you, you are, they are responsible. You know it bites, they're supposed to, it says in the ordinance, they're supposed to keep it maintained, chained, fenced in, somehow restrained in their property if they know it attacks. It may like other people, but it may not like other dogs. It may like dogs, but it not like other people, right? You know, but do we have to find out if somebody actually gets mauled? Before we do something?
I've got a story to tell too, down there at the park.
We gotta let him finish. Let him finish.
You know, uh, yeah, that's, that's it. I mean, I just, you know, I'm coming here first, to see the city will enforce it. If not, I'm going to see what else I can do to get it enforced.
Thank you.
You know?
Thanks.
I'm just tired of arguing and fighting with people. I don't want to hurt somebody else's dog. I wouldn't want somebody to hurt mine if it happened. I understand dogs get out, get loose, it happens. Ours got off the door already. But I'll catch it. It's not an everyday or five times a day thing. When it's, you know, five, six times a day, and you see it all day around the street, it's not an accident anymore. You know, you're letting it loose. You're letting it roam and you're not coming to get it. And it bites. I mean, the boxer growl twice, and my wife in the yard, when she was guarding, he came up behind her. You know? It's just, I'm not, I'm just not going to take it anymore. I'm not going to have her get hurt. I wouldn't want to see anybody here get hurt, bit. And I'm sure you won't, won't want your wife to get bit.
Or grandkids or?
Yeah, or even a kid, yeah. You know, um, we have an ordinance and it's not enforced. So I'm asking the city council and you guys to enforce it. Especially with pit bulls, and, and, and the sheriff's trying to say that if, the, 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 um, there's a stipulation that if they say it's a mixed pit bull, it's illegal in, in Leslie. No, it's not. I read the ordinance, it said if you call it a pit bull, it's a pit bull, it's illegal. Whether it's mixed, half, three quarters, whatever, it can't be in the city of Leslie. It's in the ordinance. I read the whole thing. So what the sheriff's saying is wrong, which I'm going to take it, I'm going to show it to him as my next step. I'm going to say, if I call you, you're going to have to do something, you know, if it's running loose. There is no stipulation, it was mixed, no. It says if you call it a pit bull, it's a pit bull. And it can't be here.
Thank you. We will, I will definitely look into it, and I will bring it back to the council. Um, Mitzi, did you want to address it as well?
Uh, there's just an old man down there, a month or so ago, that, you know, he's walking his dog, he's what, seventy-seven? There's a witter down there in Burnes. Yeah. This girl's dog, she's walking him, and he jumped on the witter's dog. Then when he did, they pulled the witter down and.
Pulling it around.
Yeah, so, yeah. Stuff like that's happening all the time around.
So what ordinance is that that we do have on the books?
Two thirty.
Two thirty.
Two thirty.
Um, did y'all not get a copy of it? Was it sent?
Yeah, Richard said he gave her a copy.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, Richard told me he made copies to give, but I, he may not have. I'll get you all copies.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't get one in the packet.
I think, yeah, I didn't either. Maybe that was that text.
I didn't get one in the packet. Um, I've seen the ordinance, and that ordinance was in place because a young.
Copy of the ordinance.
That, that ordinance was placed because a young boy got bit.
Okay.
Pretty bad. And I'm not sure that a breed-specific or a ban needs to be in place, just a, a leash law. Um, we might want to look at that and just say.
And having signs posted, so we know.
And signs posted in the parks and, you know. But if you read it to the letter of the law, okay? It says that pit bulls can't even ride in a truck in Leslie, basically.
Well, yeah, it said, it said they couldn't.
So if somebody was passing through, would they be able to let their dog out and walk it, a pit bull?
No. Says it has to be maintained in the vehicle or in a cage. Once they reach the limits, they can take it out to the bathroom. It's allowed to come into city limits as long as it stays in the vehicle.
Yeah.
Which is fine. Where I'm from, you can't have one at all to kill it. You know, because a, a little kid got attacked, mild death and kill. And they're just tired of it, you know, and.
Yeah.
Is it going to take, you know, you say, well, maybe it shouldn't be a specific breed, but, okay. So my wife gets attacked by a pit bull, then I come back and say, hey, now you took it out, they're bringing pit bulls, now she's attacked.
If it was a chihuahua and it got a hold of your jugular, it could do damage too. There are some pretty mean little dogs too, you know?
You know, but I mean, you're talking to, you're talking to a seventy pound or a hundred pound dog to a, a twenty pound dog.
Yeah.
That can drag you to the ground really quick.
Um, I also. Um, I also spoke with um another municipality and what they do. Um, I will visit with the sheriff, okay? And if there is an issue, and I will tell everybody, if you have an issue with a dog at large, please call the sheriff's department. We need to know who owns it, the dog, okay, so we can issue citations, okay? Um, and then we get enough citations on it, we, I don't know what we can do legally, but we need to do something, like I said.
Doesn't it say something in the ordinance that you can, if it's some, you can actually take it and, and combine it and?
Where we.
I don't know, you know, what I'm saying.
What are we gonna?
Yeah.
Well, that's what we talked about, there's not really an animal officer in our county, so that kinda limits to the street.
So the municipal league helped work with that ordinance?
Yeah.
David Shum was the lawyer at that time. And the language was pulled from several other municipalities that have a similar situation and or ordinance. But that language came from the municipal.
Uh, but as a new council member, I'd definitely like to review it, at, at, at the next meeting, review it and, and go over it. And in the meantime, we don't have to, to me, as a council, we do not have to wait till then to enforce it.
That's right.
You know, because nobody in the city of Leslie should not be able to walk around.
Correct.
And enjoy a, a leisurely stroll through Leslie or go through the park in your backyard without, so we could start it. It, it's already exists, so that means we can enforce it, so I'm all in favor of enforcing it immediately. And then if we wanna tweak it or whatever, or review it as a group, that's another thing, but we could definitely start.
The sheriff came down, uh, a deputy came down here a year ago and asked about the ordinance. And I gave, I gave probably ten copies of that ordinance to them, okay? So they know we have a leash law, they know that we have a, and they were just wanting to see what they can do to help enforce it. I will revisit with them again, but anyways.
And he was down in the park there two days ago, the sheriff, I saw him for the first time since when?
Thank you.
Letter thing, that letter thing you talked about today?
And we can send a letter to, we, we need to know who owns the dog, send a letter to the owner as well.
Like, for example, if somebody's dog is getting in their trash every week, cuz that, somebody's coming here to complain about that. Uh, I don't mind, if you can get the name of it is, I'll send them a letter with a copy of the ordinance.
Before you do that, I got a, I got a question, a point of order, does the ordinance say to send a letter, does the ordinance say to find them?
Doesn't, it doesn't really spell that out.
That ordinance used to be given out for any new water company or customers that would come in, as they would pay their, their deposit. And should they just give them a copy of that ordinance, because it was a pit.
The pit bull time.
Do you remember the line where they said that they would be fined or they're supposed to file a letter?
They can be fined because the city of Leslie's received money.
The problem is, they have to admit it's their dog, and like, the cops have been on calls and they are like, it's not my dog. And they're like, it's in your yardage, in your house, and they're like, it's not my dog, and they can't do anything.
We can come.
I gave the dog to such and such.
We can address that as well, cuz if it's not your dog, then you don't have any problems with it.
Yeah.
This.
Being.
Yeah, that's the cops' problem. We need signs made though.
Okay.
I think that, like you said, because people be like, well, I didn't know we had. Well, if it's posted and there's signs made, hey, there's a leash law here.
Yeah.
People coming in will know too.
You bet.
You can look on the books, Alan, you've issued several payments.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, I, I've seen that one, dug through many stuff, but I didn't know he gave the copy, so I'll start doing that, he didn't tell me that, I'll definitely do that.
Can you say if anybody signed up for public? Just bring the list, please.
Yeah, but I'm sorry about that, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, and you know, I said, I don't wanna hurt somebody's dog, but I will.
Well, that's, that's good.
Yeah, with dog lovers too, you know.
You're up, Miss Elizabeth.
Oh. I'm gonna shoot. I'm just sitting back. I just, I guess, I don't know if it's a question, a statement, a conversation, um, but. I am wondering why there's no stop signs on Elm Street.
There was one, it got taken down.
On Elm Street?
No, you're, he's, she's talking about on Elm, going towards the school.
Like the four way stop sign, like we have up at the Votek, like right down to that?
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, down from that, we used to have the four way there, but it got taken down.
That was taken down by Lionel Remen, when he was sitting on the council, so you can look back how far that was, that was pretty.
We could look at that.
Yeah, I just, we walk on that road a lot, Elm Street, and a lot of families live on that road. Um. I, I don't know if it's something that ran through the city or if it's something that the.
No, it's a city business, no, it's city.
Okay, just seems like there should be stop signs on Elm Street.
At what intervals? Every block? No, we got school buses coming through there, we got school buses, and we, you know, and it's, this is your story, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know the answer right now, I haven't thought that deep into it, but. One, two, every other block?
There's just one on Oak Creek.
There's one on Oak, yeah.
Yeah, just a thought.
It was at High and Elm, is where it was, at the church.
Yeah, right there at the church.
Is where it was.
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
At that four way.
Yeah.
From my house, to pick up speed.
Oh, people just fly, they fly, it's like, it's like a runway.
I have to remind everybody that Elizabeth's got the floor, sorry.
We can, we can talk about it, it's just something I just wanted to bring back, so. We were talking about signs, well, Jackie.
So there's a sign maker in, in a, um, Pickle's Gap, where we get our signs, and when I go get signs made for this, I mean, we can talk. We can approve it right now.
So we can literally just put up a stop sign?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I can motion.
I got a motion made to be approved.
A second.
At what interval?
At High and Elm.
At High and Elm. Respect.
That's what it was before, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, and then we can look at it further and, and, but that always put one, one spot to slow them down.
Okay.
For now.
Got a motion made? In a second. All those in favor? You better raise your hand. Did he eat already tonight? Okay, you still better raise your hand. Thank you. I will get on that case out, um. All right. Council, any, anybody got anything?
Yeah, why don't you go over what you said last month or whatever, something about the butter. Wasn't reading this right from all the time. Can you explain that?
I'm not sure where you, what you're talking about.
And I'm not sure either, cuz I didn't get it all.
Well, we talked about leaks.
Uh, no, it wasn't a leak, it was just, what was it you were talking about?
I'm not sure, let's look at the minutes.
Well, we were talking, I think we were talking about, no, we were talking about, um, like the new meters when they came in and how they're more accurate.
Saying they weren't.
Not the new ones, the new ones are reading, the new ones are straight, I think the old ones, the old ones were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Weren't reading right.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, the new ones are reading, yeah.
And old some.
And everybody's concerned, I gotta leak this much.
Yeah, cuz of the sewer, yeah, sewer, right.
Anybody else? Um, Act six oh five training. Um, Hayden doesn't need it, you don't need it. You do, Richard does, you do, and, and Bert.
Is that the, is that the conference?
Well, there's, um, July eleventh in Lone Oak, um, Arkansas Rural Water's putting on training. Or you can wait till September the tenth in Hot Springs, Arkansas Rural Water's putting it on at the technical conference, so.
I'm gonna say this to the group, and I'll try to, I'm only saying this because I think this whole city is my family. I just got diagnosed with cancer this past weekend, so I'm gonna be doing a lot of testing for the next week. And I'm really telling y'all, because I don't want. Sometimes I don't deal real well with stress, and what I do is I kinda take it out on people, so if that ever happens, please know, call me out on it, cuz I need to be. Understand, there's a, there's a lot going on right now, so I, I already know I have to have surgery, I don't know what type of surgery.
What kind, can you go get it?
It's melanoma, so.
For it.
But they don't know if it's an, so there's a lot of testing gonna go on and all, but, uh, I'm only telling you guys, because I want you to know that, uh. Call me out, if, because sometimes with stress, I don't always deal with things the right way and. But I think of everybody in this town as my family, and I love all of y'all, and so I just wanted to let you guys know as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, to answer your question, is that conf- the Rural Water Conference in Hot Springs, seventh through tenth? The seventh through the tenth of September.
Okay.
But the tenth is the actual training, you can go down just for that block of training, the Act six oh five training.
Okay.
But it's an eight hour block, and it's a full eight hours, trust me. Um, I wanna go over what I received today from John Wilkerson at Arkansas Municipal League. Um, this is the new laws that just went on the books, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna read it, I'm just gonna highlight a few things. Um, there's a lot of stuff in here that affects us. Um, uniform chart of accounts, we talked about it, um, we don't do a uniform chart of accounts right now, and this more for Alan. Um. Statewide, we have to go to a uniform chart of accounts, and that means that all of his accounting has to have a designated code. Means nothing to y'all, it will, once we start getting reports and we look at fund so and so or whatever, but that's, that's one that's just got enacted. Um. Let's see, Act nine nine three, collection and distribution of district court sums, um, I'm gonna look into that a little deeper. What it is, it provides a mech- mechanism for municipalities without a district court or police department to receive appropriate distributions of district court sums. Act six seventy one is mandatory training for Alan. Um, of municipal treasurers. Um, Act six seventy one requires municipal treasurers, whether elected or appointed, to complete eight hours of training provided by the Arkansas Municipal League. In cooperation with Arkansas Leg Audit. Familiarly elected and appointed treasurers, the training must be completed within a hundred and eighty days of taking office. Failure to get the training will result in an audit finding.
But at this point, they don't know what they're gonna get back. We don't have a date yet, so.
Ordinance is for elections, uh, this is one that we have to, requires municipalities to send a copy of the municipal ordinance detailing whether the election for council members. Will be by ward or at large, and we're by ward, so I have to send a letter to, um. Election Commission. All right. Not gonna read, let's see, one that I found interesting is. Act three thirteen, which is ADU's accessory dwelling units, which is if you have a property on your house, on your. A little shack on your main house, and you're renting that out, and it has separate living quarters. Um, water, sewer, kitchen, whatever, if it's a, a living quarters. Um, and I'm just giving you the highlights. It mandates that separate water and sewer systems mandate separate water and sewer systems from the main structure. Um. So that was one that I found interesting, anyways, there's a whole bunch of other stuff. Act four twenty one, private club permitting, um, Ryans, Skylark. Um, when they filed for their liquor license, they had to be a nonprofit. That's how they set up their business to get their whatever. Um. It removes that requirement now, you're not, don't have to be a private club. Or a nonprofit.
That's in Dry Counties?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. When did that happen?
This, I don't, I don't remember the date on this one, um, anyways.
This session, I guess.
This session, yeah, it just happened. Um, utility rate studies, um, requires wastewater and sewer system to obtain a, a rate study, we already do it. Um, the new verbiage is wastewater, which we've already combined our water and wastewater, but it's, uh, we already do it, so it's. We're ahead of the game on that one. Um, it also says five percent has to go into an R and R account, replenishment and replacement, so we're already doing it. This one's a liability for shooting sports events, if the city owned a shooting range, we're not liable for any accidents that happen. Um. Pro- Act five twenty nine, prohibition on regulation of vegetable gardens. The city can't mandate, we can't say that somebody can't put a garden on their property, we weren't gonna anyway, but just thought that was interesting. Um, Act five seventy three, this one's new, uh, like, I've not heard of it. Um, requires the national motto, in God we trust, and the ten commandments to be displayed in public buildings. So I'll need, and it tells me what size it needs to be, sixteen by twenty, it needs to be visible, um, by all, anyways. That's state law. Public meetings versus informal meetings, if, if Bert is seeing Mitzi out in the, out, um. On the street, not at the council meeting, it talks about what you can and can't talk about, about council business, okay? Act nine twenty nine, dot gov domain, we have to, within, um, by January of twenty twenty seven. We have to have a dot gov extension on our website. Which I've already, it's easy to do. That's by law.
You said twenty twenty seven, right?
By June.
January, okay.
No, yeah, January first of twenty seven. Um. Think that's about it.
The first one, you were talking about the codes, the, of the account codes, is our software that we're purchasing?
We're not doing it yet, because this list that they've got, the account firms and the software firms aren't, they're not a hundred percent, it's exactly the number, so. As soon as they give them the exact num- you know, the, what they want, we'll, it'll slide in with an update, basically.
And it'll be every.
Everybody.
Marshall, Clinton, everybody will be the same account.
The reason I was asking that is, have, have we, have we gone over to that yet?
No, 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 they're not wanting to, they're not wanting to rush, cuz they said these numbers could change, because they're having, realistically, now that it's passed. Look at every city, so they don't crisscross and say, well, all these little towns have five, seven, eight, whatever, and then all, there's a big, they're not the exact same. So they're crisscrossing, and she said as soon as it comes out, probably another month or so.
We're kind of in that unique position that we were just going on board with the new computer.
Yeah, and we're just using the system, everybody's been using.
Does it make sense to hold off on doing that?
Yeah, 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 she says they're not updating anybody yet, as soon as they get an official, official list, then it'll just be an update, it'll convert their system.
We're still gonna convert.
Yeah, we're still gonna convert.
But once the, the commons, the counting commons come in, it'll just transfer in, in digitally in there, we're still converting.
Oh, okay.
We're still converting, yeah.
Gotcha.
And we should be doing checks by.
We're hoping by the end of the month.
By the end of the month, so we've got the printer, we've got all the checks, we've got, he's working diligently to input everything into the system.
I got everything since January one that I've done into the system, so it's taken some time to get in there, amongst everything else, and it seems like no matter how early I get here. Somebody will come into Baywaterville at eight o'clock or seven thirty in the morning, but, um, it's going pretty good. Uh, one of the big ones is, for example, one of the things we are changing is when you see water general on all of our stuff. That technically should have been called a water revenue account instead of water general, um, so we've changed that in the new system, and that's just verbiage that they like to hear when the auditors come in. It's not a big deal, it will be for me, because we've all called it water general, Benny called it water general, it's just a change in the name, the same thing. But for example, on that one, there's about seventy or eighty deposits in there that go into it, well, I better put all of them, so I'm about halfway through that, that's one of the big accounts is all the deposits. How I have to do a little bit of that, I, I will say, it's okay, there's stuff that's non-essential, like, we can put all of our records into the system, so. How I have to do a little bit of that, I, I will say, it's okay, there's stuff that's non-essential, like, we can put all of our records into the system, so probably next board, next council meeting. I'll have some ordinance, not resolution about the stuff, but like, all the bills we get in can be uploaded into the system. And, and then I can tie it, so when auditor comes in, it's all right there, we'll still have the regular copy, but it's all trace to get it. One of the other ones is, uh, our deposits are never in our R V S, and that's one thing to make everything work right, just so I rip the numbers all the way back to an auditor. They need to be in, so my wife's got a little more time this summer, so I'm gonna take the book, I've got the list, and just say, hey, go back through and find all these people who may add a fifty dollar deposit. I'll be doing it in the computer, she's just kind of doing the backtrack with me on that. And like, some of this scanning, like, all the bank statements can go in, for public knowledge, anybody, anybody can request them. Uh, I'm gonna have her scan those in for me, that way she can sit there doing it while I can keep working on other stuff, because it's, I didn't realize I was telling, granted, I didn't. The, uh, Act eight thirty-three in this new system, it has to be all set up in log, it's kind of like a virtual account, it's inside the fire department account. So we had to get good numbers captured, that was a whole day.
We've got new members, so Act eight thirty-three, does everybody know what that is, if not, we can broad.
Yeah.
Broad brush it.
It's money we get from the state every year, and there's certain requirements we have to meet to get it, and then we've got to account for what it's. Alan will have to make an account for how we spend it every year when you file it for the next year.
Yeah, and that's what this thing, we're having to do virtually, we'll see how it was set up and where, you know, so we start our new year off with right and everything, and so. I'm actually in the process of renewing, we gotta be renewed by the end of this month, but, um, it's kind of weird, if you look at it, for example, the numbers. That we got last year, if you looked at the total we got from Act eight thirty-three, was actually, that amount was based off of stuff we bought in twenty twenty-three. So this year, I went through and found a bunch more resources over what Benny did, and is my was the turnbacks. I think I'm gonna be able to put in for about another ten thousand, so we'll get that money this year, but it really is paying for last year, so it's always like a year behind, and it's very confusing, and. It was confusing for me, it's like all down there, the way they set it up and stuff, and what it goes in, it's kind of confusing to look at, so, um. Anyway, we've got that part set up, but that was a whole day, just figuring out how to get it all in there and getting the numbers to come out right. How it all needs to, but working diligently every day.
Wednesday, um, I'm doing interviews for part-time help, I've got a couple set up. Um, two gentlemen actually obtained full-time employment since they've applied, it's good for them, um, so that's, that's going on Wednesday. June sixth, there's a meeting, I don't know if y'all have heard about it, on Facebook, um, the winds, turbines, it's at the OHAC. And I don't know the time, but there's, um, we're gonna talk about wind turbines there.
I think it's six.
Six P M.
I think it's six, but.
It is, it's not a meeting for both. Nope. For, for both. No, this is Concerned Citizens of Carroll County. Just to make sure everybody knows. Concerned citizens of Carroll County to come tell us what they're up against, so. The picnic that we had, or the, I guess we can call it a picnic, the potluck, was a huge success, I mean, we had, Alan had.
I counted, well, over half the, the citizens came, if you look at our population on the sign, we had almost right at exactly half. Uh, which I thought was impressive, I didn't think we'd get even close to that.
I thought we had forty or fifty people, but we had about a hundred and sixty-six point seventy, and that was, that was pretty good. So we'll do another one, it won't be this month, um, no, yep, it'll be broadcast. Homecoming, the Homecoming Committee is looking for sponsors to make donations, um. Yeah, they're looking for sponsors. You can give a Chantel, Tylitha, um, Sammy, I think, who else is on there? And Lonnie, that's right, yep. They're looking for sponsors, um, September the sixth, y'all have these, has everybody seen those right there? Whittling and fiddling, um, festival. And we're also doing Deep in a Classy, October, do you have a flyer on that?
It's.
October the eleventh. Fana? It's gonna be, you'll see that around, so. Let's see, always opportunities to volunteer. Arkansas Municipal League Conference is a week of homecoming, um, I will be going down there for the conference and coming back daily, but. What I'll be doing, um, you all are welcome to go, the registration is still open, um, good information, but. What is that one again? When? What is it called?
What is it?
Arkansas Municipal League.
Oh. It's like summer.
It's not a con, it's a summer.
Summer.
Yeah.
Summer conference, basically.
Um, Friday at noon, there's a ice cream social at the Lickety Split, did you want to talk about that?
That sugar. Connecticut offered to pay for the first customers that come in Friday, so. Appreciate them offering that.
Now your blood sugar.
I know.
Open at twelve o'clock?
So they called City Hall today, and they're wanting to sponsor, um, Homecoming, so I got, I gave them, um, phone number, and I believe they reached out. Then she called back later and wanted to get information about, she said she'd be here Thursday, but it was Friday, and I guess y'all worked out, so, anyways, that's good. New water rates are in effect, um, you've gotten quite a few calls on people worrying about their water rates, I mean. It, if you go from a basic bill, a sixty-six dollar and a penny, I believe it went up four dollars and.
It's like seventy, seventy-six or something like that, seventy, twenty-six, something like that.
So, four dollars, and that's a lot. Seventy-six what, Fane?
Thirteen.
Seventy-six thirteen, so.
No, that's, must be where she lives.
Anyways, that's. It's here, and with that being said. With that being said, um, the ordinance states that we're doing shut-off procedures. And June sixteenth would be the first opportunity for folks to show that we don't want to shut them off, so. Tomorrow, um, Alan's gonna send out reminders, we have a few people that still need to pay their bill, or we're gonna, we're shutting off. Just the way we have to do it, but we have to establish and stick to it.
Some of them are just like a month, they always pay a month behind us.
Yeah.
And that's right, they just, by the time it's, the new bill goes out, they pay for the last month, so that's what, a couple of.
So we did say in last month's meeting that, yes, we were gonna start doing that, but it's not a slam dunk either, right? In other words, we're gonna look at the cases.
Well, like, it's, it's says in the ordinance that they can always come to me, if they get a big bill or whatever, we can always address it ahead of time. Uh, we had one last month, I think, that, I, immediately when we saw, I saw the water bill, what, you know, what their water issue was, I ran to her house that night, she said, yeah, we just found it when Mo D yard it out, I'm getting it fixed.
And I'm just saying, if, if somebody's lost their job and they can't pay their water bill, please call me.
Case by case, yeah.
Or whatever, I mean, cause no, you know, things happen, right?
Yeah.
So.
These are not.
There's a difference between just not paying it because I'm being hard-headed or whatever.
These are.
And there's, life's got me, and, and I, and I honestly need some help.
Yeah, and they, and we've done that in the past, and it's still, and that's why we added in on the ordinance report, I talked about, we, we want to do it ahead of time, so we kind of know, you know, hey, I got my water bill, this one, I can't do it, I'm on a limited fixed income.
Yeah.
And I've done that, and we don't even charge a late fee, they'll say, you know, give me three or four months, okay, we're. So far, it's been one hundred percent, it all either done it ahead of time, or they've done it, and if, nobody's went over, the ones I, of course, I've only been in five or six months, but. Uh, the ones that come in, they're genuine about it, dates, what they tell you is golden, um. But I, I do, like, if I see a bill like that, lady last month, I was like, whoa, that's a water leak, it was way high, and she was, yeah, we just found it today, they, they're getting it fixed tomorrow, and, you know. She worked out how we got it taken care of, so.
Yep. Good deal. Yep. Any other? Comments, council? That's all I got, um, next meeting will be, um, where's my calendar, July the seventh? I'll need a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion that we adjourn.
Got a motion made to adjourn? Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? See you next meeting. Thank you for your.
And, and I'll get your edits made, when you send me, I'll be.